There's a couple, a few changes. Changes to number three. The, there will be no high school presentation tonight. You can cross that off your agenda. That will be at the next meeting. If you look at on page four, number five. G four, G four. You need to change the date of March to April twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two. And if you will look on page three, just below the halfway mark on the on the resolved. Each of the resolves has the words Board of Education of the Central School listed below. Those three need to be changed to North Rose Wilkett Central School. Okay? So we have a motion on the floor. All, all, any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended? Motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Pollan, I'll have you, if you will, introduce our presentations for tonight.
Sure. Thank you very much. So it's an honor and pleasure to introduce Carrie Merritt tonight, who's going to be doing a presentation on our Alternative Learning Center. She's going to be speaking on behalf of her colleagues Mel Sarah and Amy Plow, who both have a loom entry into the presentation. They're doing some fantastic things. As you know, we started off last August with a number in approximately the forties. And at the last check, we were up to eighty-six students that participate in their program some way, shape, or form. So we're really excited to have Mrs. Merritt present to you and entertain any questions at the end. And I really appreciate Carrie jumping in and doing this, knowing that it is a break week. So Carrie, I'll turn it over to you at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for letting us come and present tonight. The ALC is something that's near and dear to my heart and has been for several years now. And we really appreciate being able to share our stats and what, and what's going on in our program. Just going to share my screen. Want to make sure everybody can see that?
Yes, thank you.
Before we go, okay, we'll start it up. Again, this is, it's the High School Alternative Learning Center. We have, I'm sorry, this is our table of contents. I apologize. I need to click through and do this. I haven't done this in a while. The introduction is to get to know what we're doing. Then we have a little overview of our social emotional learning activities and our student survey data. We spent some time at the mid-year point surveying our students to find out if we were meeting their needs and what else we could do to help them get through to their personal goals of graduating or getting their credits or just re-upping their commitment to school. COVID has done kind of a bit of damage on some student interest in school and some student experiences in school. And we're trying to do everything we can to mitigate that and get students back into just being students, if nothing else, that they can do during the day. In our program is myself, Amy Plow, who's another teacher, Mel Sarah, who's our school counselor. We also have a teaching assistant, Caitlin Bowens. She is full-time in our program. And Joyce Freeman, who is also full-time in our program as an aide. Amy Plow also teaches some self-contained English classes. Mel Sarah pushes into health classes with the Love Notes program. She also teaches Project Success and Y Try programs. And I also teach a self-contained science class, hence the background of the solar system. This is actually my science class background, and I couldn't figure out how to change it. So I apologize if the solar system bothers you. The kids like it during science class. The ALC was established back in 2011 because we had students that were having difficulty moving through the traditional high school setting and reaching graduation, frankly. We developed a four-year plan at that time and we ended up with a model that was supposed to be a school within a school back after four years, where the students could spend the entirety of their high school careers and have accrual and recovery and everything else. We never quite got there because we've been trying to work ourselves out of a job ever since we started by meeting the students' needs and having them graduate so there wouldn't be as much need for the Alternative Learning Center. But every year, there seems to be new, new and changing needs. And so we're still around because we, we were adaptive and we changed based on the population of students coming through our school. And COVID has really seen a jump in those that really need some more intensive services. We develop individualized plans for credit recovery aiming towards graduation. That comes in all sizes and shapes, but it's all based on the individual student needs. We provide additional support for instruction, organization, postgraduate planning, individual and group counseling. The additional support for instruction and organization, that's for their, what we call live classes, because they're the classes they're currently taking, not in the ALC. So we're sort of a resource center on top of just doing the credit recovery. We collaborate closely with all of the teachers in the building to make sure that our rigor and our course, our programming is substantial and that it meets all the criteria that they would have to have in the regular classroom. And we work closely with the families to ensure that the students are coming in, that they're engaging, that if we don't see them for a couple of days, we sort of hunt them down and find out why we haven't seen them because contact, whether it's in person via Zoom, via phone call, via text message, anyway, contact is really the key. And if we can't contact them and have that relationship with them, they don't tend to succeed in school. We recover course credit through various methods, Gradpoint, project-based learning, hard copy materials. We do tutoring sessions. We do after-school sessions. We do weekend sessions. We go out to their houses if necessary. It all depends on where they're at and what their needs are in, in order to get their credits and work towards graduation. This is our program cycle. We thought it'd be useful to show you just the overall, what happens with every student. There's the preparation before they come in, going through all of their transcripts, their paperwork, et cetera, to see where they're at academically, getting information from another school counselor or anybody that's been working with them to bring them into the program and sort of adopt them into, into the situation. Then we implement the program with the recovery credits, any kind of grad point they need, any kind of assistance they need with their outside classes. We're constantly assessing and revising their plans along the way. And then afterwards, we reflect to see what worked, what didn't work. If they've graduated, if they haven't graduated, if they've moved on to the next grade, or if they weren't successful, why? So that when we go back to, we can re-prepare for them because they will be, they'll be back. We'll, we'll have them again the next year. And so it's a constant cycle that we go through all year long. These are just some numbers of, for ALS, our Alternative Learning Center throughout the years. The first column is the total number of students that came through the program. And the second number is the percentage of graduating students that it represents. So we had seventeen students, but we also, sixteen percent of them were graduating, not sixteen percent of them, I apologize. Sixteen percent of the total of graduating students was represented from the ALC. I know that sounds a little bit backwards, but it's basically how many students that graduated that we worked with to go through. And so the numbers are two different columns because the total is not necessarily, they're not all necessarily seniors, obviously. Through the years, it has gone up and gone down. It depends on student need in a particular cohort. Ending with this year, as you can see, our numbers have gone up substantially. Part of that is because we're able to, because we have more, we have more people this year, which is awesome. I love having additional teachers and a teaching assistant and our counselor. So we hit a lot more students. So far this year, it's been up to eighty-six. And we're projected at about twenty-three percent of the graduating students this year will have gone through the ALC. We've already had five students graduate this year that we worked with. So they count in that twenty-three percent because they're this year's cohort. Now I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, Mel and Amy, and for their part of the presentation.
Okay, so taking a look at the data from the student perspective, we asked the kids in the ALC to complete a survey and ask them a few questions that we were curious about the answers for. One of the questions that we asked was about their favorite aspects of the ALC. As you can see, the additional adult support was their most favorite aspect. And then quiet work environment and the choice in work completion. Choice and work completion is simply having the ability to do it online through Gradpoint, online through Google Classroom, working on their Chromebook, or doing hard paper copies. But we were pretty impressed with all of the results. We liked that they liked how we have set up the ALC. The next slide shows that we have, on average, about eleven students assigned to the ALC per period. However, we typically have many more students than eleven. Nineteen is our highest scheduled period, but we very regularly have seventeen-plus students in the room at any given period. This little graphic shows you the kids who said that they come either as often as possible. They come sometimes, or they only come during their scheduled periods. A lot of our students come whenever they have the opportunity, whether that's from a classroom that, you know, is working independently and they, the students ask specifically to come to the ALC, or if the teacher makes arrangements for them to come down. But we typically do have a lot of extra students in our room. Graduation in ALC, we asked the students if they felt that there was a connection between their presence in the ALC and their expected graduation rate. And the kids all said that there was either a strong connection or somewhat of a connection. Zero percent of the students polled said that there was no connection. So they really see the value in the ALC being tied to graduation. We also asked the kids to describe the ALC in one word. Something that we really took pride in was the fact that they, a lot of them had said that they felt that the ALC is a safe place. And that just goes to show that the, our ability to build close relationships and being in the type of setting and environment that we're in is really beneficial to these kids. All right, so taking a look at the data from the program side, this is just a slide that shows ALC by the numbers. This year, we have eighty-four students. We have contact, direct contact with eighty-four students. There are sixteen average contacts home made by the ALC per week. This was during first semester. Some weeks, it's definitely way more than that, and some weeks, a little less. But typically, we have sixteen contacts home per week. There are twenty-seven students in the ALC who are slated to graduate in June of twenty-twenty-two. And as of March of twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty-two, I'm sorry, there are sixty-five credits have been recovered through the ALC at this point. Our Regents exemption data, in January, we had the opportunity to provide Regents exemptions if students had earned class credit. There were thirty-eight possible Regents exemptions. It impacted a total of twenty-eight students pathway to graduation. In order to make that happen, we had a total of one thousand two hundred and seven communications that were sent during those two weeks. Texting has really been a positive way of communication from parents and with students. A lot of people prefer text because they can answer them quickly even when they're at work. And then ninety-two percent of the possible Regents exemptions were earned. So we were really proud of the kids for, for reaching that ninety-two percent. So shifting over to a really important topic right now that ALC has been focusing on all year is social emotional learning. So as the counselor dedicated for ALC this year, I am very proud to be in this program and be able to be dedicated to our students. The main focus for any activities that we do for SEL, any initiatives or programs that we take on really focuses on the castle wheel and the core competencies that they want students to learn before graduation, which focus on self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, and self-awareness, all of which tie perfectly in with the American School Counselor Association standard, as well as the New York State curriculum guidance on mental health and social emotional learning. So everything that we do in ALC comes back to that foundational piece and the standards that we are focusing on as counselors. What we've done with the counseling program in ALC this year is we try to do monthly activities so that we are making sure that there's a balance between the students' main focus on academics while also making sure that they're taking priority to progress on their individual goals and take care of themselves too. So in September, the biggest thing was getting to know our students and provide them with kind of that base positive relationship building and coping skills. So we were able to let everyone build calming sensory jars, which you'll see in a picture later on, which is an awesome coping tool for people to use. And we also created digital vision boards focusing on setting goals for the year, identifying their positive supports, and identifying their own personal strengths. We did that through Google Classroom. It was also nice because our staff members were able to make their own digital vision boards and share them with the students as well. In October, which is National Bully Prevention Month, each student participated in a photo pledge project where they added their picture to a board and put their own slogan to say why they're standing up against bullying and encourage their peers to stand up against bullying. And we also focused on the tie-in between music and how that supports our mental health. In November, of course, we're focusing on gratitude, which has really been focused for all year. We kind of tied back to gratitude throughout the year. And we did thankfulness booths and staff and students created a nice display to share the things that they're thankful for in their lives. December, we teamed up with NAMI, which is the National Alliance on Mental Illness, specifically with their Rochester chapter. NAMI mailed us out free messages of Hope Cards as well as QR code scanner stickers for all of our students. They know that's actually sixty free stickers. And anyone who participated in the Hope Card project was able to receive a free sticker for their phone, for their laptop, or just to take home with them. And on that QR code sticker, it takes you to a website that has free mental health resources, crisis line numbers, and tons and tons of things that are available in the greater Rochester area or nationally for anybody who's dealing with a crisis or a mental health challenge. So what we did was students created a beautiful display with their messages for anybody who might be struggling during the holidays or struggling with mental health issues throughout the year. Students really took this project very seriously and it's something that we were very proud of. And NAMI actually featured our picture on their social media, both on Instagram and on Facebook, and gave a big shout out to the ALC. In January, coming back from the break and starting the new year with twenty-twenty-two, our students did positive mantra bracelets. So we were really focusing on going into the new year with growth mindset and kind of a spark of positivity. And we also were able to participate in a pamphlet, which is kind of like a digital journal that everybody can add sticky notes to. And we talked about the things that we're proud of for twenty-twenty-one, our growth areas that we want to focus on for twenty-twenty-two. And so it was a really cool thing to see everyone's responses on there. In February, it was all about taking care of ourselves. So we had a board with all sorts of different self-care strategies. And we also did a Spread the Love Challenge where students were encouraged and incentivized to conduct three acts of self-care, three acts of kindness around school, and three acts of kindness in their communities or in their homes. And this past month in March, we had an interactive board where students shared whether they were lucky because they can do a certain thing, because they are a certain thing, and because they have a certain thing in their life. So again, we touched back on that gratitude piece and promoted that self-reflection for our students. So here's just a few pictures of those activities that we had in that fall semester. So we have our Bully Prevention Board with the pictures of our students. Those are now in a little photo album that we have in our, in our room. And the message for Bully Prevention Month there is kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, which I think really capture what the ALC is all about. You can see our awesome sensory jars. These are on everyone's desk, and many of the students have taken their jars home or left them in the ALC to use during their periods here. Our positive mantra bracelets, and also our messages of Hope Cards for NAMI, which we have left up in our room even throughout the year. Another note is just the curriculums that we have in use. So many of the activities that we do are kind of one-offs initiatives that we design and implement. But we also are using some evidence-based programs throughout the year. And the main one that I really enjoyed and, and loved using with students is Y Try. And the core piece of that program is building positive supportive relationships with adults, making the content relevant for students and why it's going to benefit you in your life to build motivation and engage in the things that are around you, whether it's school, career building, building relationships again, so making it relevant for them, and really building resilient skills. So that the ten lesson curriculum that we've been using in small groups with our ALC students. I've also collaborated with our Delphi Prevention Counselor to have some of our students go through the Project Success Curriculum, which again establishes more positive connections and also make sure that students have a greater awareness of substance prevention, substance abuse prevention, and why that would impact their success down the road. We've been utilizing Naviance, which is a program that the district has been putting in place this year for college and career exploration. Specifically, students have been logging in there to search for colleges. And we are going to be building resumes for each and every student in the ALC. So our younger students coming up will be able to build on their resume in Naviance throughout their time in high school. And our senior students will be able to print out their resume to take with them to job applications or send along on their Common Acts for colleges. Lastly, I am pushing into the health classes and co-teaching with Mr. Peterson on the Love Notes curriculum, which is all about forming healthy romantic relationships and preventing dating violence and abuse. And also collaborating with Mr. Peterson and with our school psychologist and our Delphi counselor to do teen mental health first aid training. And we have fifteen ALC students who are taking health class right now and are receiving those trainings. And we will have many more of our younger students taking those classes in the years to come. So those have been receiving a lot of positive feedback from the students in health right now. And they're really tier-one prevention strategies and again, evidence-based curriculums.
As Mel and, as Mel and Amy said, we have a lot of different things going on. From any, any particular time you come into the ALC, you're going to see students that are recovering their English classes, that are prepping for Regents exams, that are just working to catch up on their live classes if they've fallen behind. We do FAFSA forms for financial aid for college. We help with college entrance letters. And also, we've been working with VESID in order to get some of our students into some training programs and Access VR, it's called Access VR, formerly VESID, to make sure that our students have careers, jobs, and/or work-study type things to go to once they graduate. So they don't, don't just get a diploma and walk out the door. The last couple of slides here is about the future of the program and where we are headed. From here, we, we're gonna, we're hoping that, that the physical expansion of the ALC, we're going to have a little more space to spread more kids out and do a few more things. We're kind of bursting at the seams. I know we have a really large room right now, and people say, "You already have a big room," and I know that, but we are kind of bursting at the seams anyway. We just, the more space we have, the more kids we bring in. We're going to continue to provide our traditional credit recovery and SEL services while we're taking on a new endeavor. We're hoping to work with all of the students that are being tutored, for whatever reason, that they're being tutored, whether they're in school, medical, out of school, whatever. A tutoring center might be attached to the ALC. And there's, I know that we're going to be working with the Geotech Program hopefully, and a few other programs that are coming in. So in that light, since we've been called the Alternative Learning Center for so long, but we're not just doing what the original ALC was doing. We thought that perhaps a rebranding, a little renaming might be appropriate for the coming years. So we would like to go forward next year and be referred to as the Cougar OPs instead of the ALC. And OP stands for Opportunities for Personal Success. So any, anything that we're doing that's going to help a student be successful will fit into that category and it, and it won't be seen as such an alternative. We would also really like to thank Mr. Bradley and Mr. Shetler and Mr. Pollan and Ms. Polyadi for all of their support with all of our students and our program and the Board of Education as well. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Could I ask, I have, oh, excuse me?
Mr. Bogart? I don't know if I'm supposed to be calling it.
I like, I like your background, by the way. Have other high schools picked up on, on this? I've, I remember this from years ago, and it has evolved into something that's really dynamic. Have other high schools picked up on this as well?
Some have. A lot of places, Red Creek actually has a program that was based on the ALC that started a few years back that they do, they do. I know we modeled our original program after Summon Webster and the Rochester City School District. We've expanded a little bit beyond that. But most schools in Clydesivana has some credit recovery now. All of our original alternative learning type tasks, most of the schools have something that they've come, they've started doing the last several years. I've had a lot of conversations with the local, in Wayne County, the local schools, saying, "Well, what do you use for credit recovery? We do this, we do that. Oh, you can do that. How does it work with the state reporting?" And that kind of thing, as they start their programs. That's been the last, well, pre-COVID, it was a couple of years before pre-COVID, and then COVID just kind of threw everybody for a loop, so.
Good, good job.
Yeah.
Carrie, I enjoyed your presentation. I do have one question. Do you ever have, like, visiting teachers come in and assist you?
Um, we have. We have had all kinds of different situations over the years. Sometimes we actually have another, a teacher come and push in and teach a class in the room. If there's a lot of students that need a particular section. We have, we've had retired teachers come in and work with students specifically on English Language Arts and Social Studies, specifically those two subjects, just to give another insight, a little background, that type of thing. We've had older students that have joined the ALC over the years that have finished and graduated that were really the best, the best for our students. We had one gentleman who has since passed away, unfortunately, but Mr. Barnes, that came and worked through the ALC and graduated, and he had the best handwriting and note-taking of anybody I've ever seen in my life. And it was awesome to watch him show the, show the students how to really take notes off of something. It was great, you know? So over the years, we've had just about every combination that we could come up with.
Okay, good. Thank you.
It's a great program, and it's obviously very successful. But like anything, any program, it depends on the teachers who are doing the work. And so kudos to those of you who are making this program work. You're doing a good job. Thank you.
I think Linda had a question.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment. I think it's great the way you're rebranding the whole thing because you certainly have expanded what you're doing, and you're providing such a wide range of opportunities and support for students. I, I think it's a perfect name.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Zeta.
Here, getting unmuted is an issue in itself. I was interested, you said VESID had been, has a new name now. Does it still do the same thing?
It does. It's called Access VR now, but it's the same type of thing. We line students up. We line students up and then they have meetings with them before graduation to set out their career path or college or anything else. And when the student goes through their interview process and applies and is accepted, Access VR will pay for training, will pay for housing, will do all kinds of things. It's, it's a service that we really like to tap into as much as we possibly can that I think gets under, underutilized in our county for sure, to really get those kids into some kind of training program or straight out to a job. And that's really what we want to do.
VESID, VESID was very good that way. And again, it was like this, it's underused because most of the people in County are not aware of it.
Right.
And I don't know how to publicize it more. I keep sending people to it, but I will definitely let them know the new naming on it now.
Yes, it's Access VR and anybody, anytime, Mel, Sarah and myself and Amy, we all, we talk to Access VR people quite a bit. And whenever they're coming in, we try to get the parent permission for any of our students that qualify to meet with that person. Even if they end up not doing it, we schedule the meetings and we set it up and we go with them. So the students aren't quite so nervous, but we try to use it as much as possible.
I know some of the people who qualify for VESID who are out of school, they used to have to go to key, like key industries for evaluations. Are they still using Key or do they go someplace else? Because I know a lot of the students didn't want Key.
I believe that they do use Key and any other place really. We've had, as soon as we have a student that qualifies, we kind of make them come to us a little bit, just so it's, it's comfortable in the place. I'm not sure about the students who have graduated because we've really worked, all the students that I've dealt with to get them hooked up before they leave. So I'm not a hundred percent sure what they do beyond that. I could find out though. Next time they come in, I'll ask them. Yes.
Now, do they also work with, maybe you've graduated, you had a job, but you had stroke or heart attack or whatever and you can't do what you used to do. Do they re, do they still retrain and things like that?
So I, I'm going to jump in on that one, Carrie, just so we can keep everything moving along. So it's not a freeze situation on Access VR. Honestly, Izetta, they do a fantastic job. And when a student qualifies for either a 504 or an IEP, you know, the Geneva office really works to make sure that they have continuous contact with both our student body members and our potential graduates. And I know from a transition into adult ed sided things that they certainly continue to work with them. All people have to do is contact the Geneva office, which I believe is the closest one to us. So, and I think, you know, Carrie's program, the, the Access VR component that she mentioned is a small highlight of it. It's certainly something that we do want to continue to promote for the job embedded skills. But Carrie, I just want to compliment you and your team on a fantastic job. And I want the Board of Education to know Carrie's commitment that she referenced earlier goes beyond the workday. Last year, I know she drove to Ovid to check in on one of our students during the pandemic. So that, that's really a testament to her. And I would second Cindy's comments about the, the success of the program is really beholden to the people who are in the program. So they're doing wonderful things. We are looking forward to the expansion of it. And we do thank the community and the Board of Education for their support. So Cindy, if you don't mind, I'd like to get Gary going on this so that there are any questions regarding the budget, we can turn that over just because there are some people that will log off after this presentation, just to continue their break week.
Okay, are we ready with the budget?
We are.
Okay. Well, because we had our budget workshop last week, I had put together this presentation, but I really don't think we need to go through each of these slides. So what I wanted to do is move right to the revenue sources slide and, and just talk very briefly about where we are. No surprises with this, with this budget. We talked about it last week. And so we are at the $33 million for $196,667 for our budget. So I wanted to show you this slide and the next slide. Here's our, our revenue sources, which you've seen before now. By, by the way, this entire presentation, I'm kind of flipping through quickly here because you've seen it, but it will be available on our website for, for our public. And the public will also is invited to attend our, our budget hearing on, on May 5th. And we'll have a little bit more inclusive budget presentation, I think, than for our general public. But this is, this is where we stand. This is our spending plan. So Tina, if you wouldn't mind going to the very next slide, please. So this is it on the expenditure side. We've got a good balanced budget. The previous slide is our total revenues to support our planned appropriations. And this is, this is the budget that the voters, we are asking for their support on May 17th. We have one more presentation between now and then that, that includes this. So here we are. We've talked about it as an administration and board. And it's been a long process. So I just want to say that in this presentation, in, in these slides, we bring up what our budget guidelines were in the first place. We always keep in mind that this is the financial interpretation of the, of the goals of the district, right? And, and we're proud of this budget that we put together. And it wasn't me, this is a, this is a team effort, including the board and support. So we had a lot of challenges to get to this, this place, right? To present a finalized budget. We have a lot of budget considerations. We mentioned that in the previous slides. We've talked about the programming and staffing updates and what our budget this year and next year and future years contain, which will result in investments in our district, investments in our infrastructure and our buildings and our academics going forward. So we believe that the 22.3 budget being presented here accomplishes that. I do want to remind the public and the board that our required public budget statement and documents will be going out on time. They're slated to go out towards the end of April. They will be located in each of our buildings and our libraries and once again, on our website. Okay, and, and the board will receive copies of those as, as well. Okay, so this is our spending plan. I just want to talk briefly then, if we go right to the second to the last slide and, and just reiterate that what this budget has done. We set out with some of our, our goals, right? And this, here we go, are meeting our goals. Thank you, Tina. So here we are, our estimated tax rate with, with our budget is estimated to be below the, the 2% level that the board has directed us to, to stay within. We've done that. Our budget to budget increase is far below the CPI, which Consumer Price Index average over the last year, that's 4.7%. So what we've had to do is really trim down. And we've identified those areas where we have been trimmed down our budget to help keep that budget to budget increase to a minimum, minimum. Okay, and we've done everything we could. We, we've accomplished our goal of maintaining or enhancing our academic programs. We're maintaining our bus replacement schedule. That's one of our propositions to authorize our annual expenditure for buses. We're providing for our school safety. That's one of our top priorities. And we're also providing for funds for our capital outlay funds within this budget. So I just wanted to recap that kind of in a summary fashion. I know you've seen everything within this presentation, all the other presentations leading up to this point. And so later on in the agenda, the board will be asked to approve this spending plan, the $33 million for $96,000. So I just want to ask this, if the superintendent wants to jump in, he, he can. Or if the board has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this point.
Anyone? I don't, there you are. Okay. I think we have a very thorough understanding of the budget being presented tonight. Not only because of the week, the, the monthly reports that you brought to us, but also at the workshop when we really delved into it in depth. And I think we have a, a good understanding. Does anyone have anything they want to ask that they're not clear on? Okay. Thank you. And then there'll be a, a presentation that is on May 5th.
Yeah.
May 5th for the public. And again, it will be very in-depth so that they understand as well.
Exactly.
Great.
It'll be a little longer than tonight's presentation.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to reports and correspondence. Izetta, do you have anything to report as liaison to the elementary school?
No, I haven't. They are on vacation this weekend and I know they're enjoying it, but I haven't. I will try to get something for next time.
It's fine. Thank you. How about you, Jen? Anything from the middle school?
Oh, loads of stuff. They had their, they had their first post-COVID dance, which is amazingly awful. You know, that's the major deal for that age group is to have that kind of social interaction and not being able to have it for the last couple of years. You know, is really, it's an implication and one of the other negatives to this whole thing. But they had their first one at the end of March and it was very well attended. Many parents were there, Mark told me. Student council organized it and the parents were there to help out, which was a great thing, believe me. They've completed the ELA exams and the math exams for the state are coming up in the end of April. The modified sports programs are going on and they are already planning for the eighth grade dinner and talent show, which is in June, the eighth grade dance and year end activities. And those activities are things that I, I found that students that I had years ago, they always remember the eighth grade dinner and dance and field days. They always remember those things. So that's, they, they've been busy there, even though they're, now they're, they're probably resting this week, I hope.
Right. Thank you. And Linda, do you have anything from the high school?
Well, of course, high schoolers are enjoying their break as well as staff. Last week, of course, they had their performance of Year in Town and that was just another big piece of evidence that we have a lot of talent in our district. We have a lot of talent in sports and in the, in the arts, but also, you know, certainly in the musical realm as well. And I know many people, I've heard a lot of comments about how much they enjoyed that. And so fortunately for them, they can recover from that this week.
Yes.
On vacation. But other than that, not much at this point, more next time.
Okay, Linda, do you have anything from Fort County?
Well, the legislative, Fort County Legislative Committee has been working on, we've redone the propositions and things that were done in 2018, I believe it was. And we've put some things together that are going to be useful for the meeting in May when the Commissioner of Education and different representatives will be there answering questions. We've been working on that as well. We all polished and presented to them before that meeting.
Thank you. John, you had a safety committee meeting?
It was a very intriguing meeting. They had a Zoom meeting with the superintendent of area, high school, area school district that had a problem a number of years ago. Dear, I don't know what's happened here.
I don't know, but we've lost you for the moment.
Yeah, we'll wait for him to reconnect.
All right, well.
I don't know what happened.
All right, while he's reconnecting, Paul, do you want to move on with Policy Committee?
Yes, please. Actually, there's nothing earth shattering, but we have another meeting scheduled. But we'll continue to plow through. Actually, the biggest thing we're doing is reviewing the policies with the oldest dates. So more to come in the future, I promise.
And do you want to just say something about the policy that is in the consent agenda? The 5210 revenue?
It's covered by. There's two, there's two aspects of it. Both are covered by state law or in state ed. So it was like, we just felt like we didn't need it, it was redundant.
Right. Okay, thank you. John, you're back. You want to finish up? I think you're muted.
The superintendent who gave the Zoom report talked about her experience as a high school principal. Then they have a devastating thing happen. I forgot when, maybe 10 years ago, but still, it pointed out that they had a checklist and they had to modify the checklist of what to do when an emergency like that happens. And it's not as simple as it sounds. I mean, it was exhausting, the things that, that, that staff had to go through with the police, the parents, the children, it's, it goes on and on. But I think it was a learning experience for our safety committee. And our, our, our program is, is good, but it always needs checking on. There are always changes that should be made and brought up. So I think that's been a goal for summer use. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we need to, as a board, vote on the Fort County School Board's officers. That ballot and information was in your packet. There were, the first part of what we need to vote on tonight is the election of officers. The slate there was presented by the nominating committee of the Fort County. These people did consent to, to these jobs. School districts, member school districts had the opportunity to send in other nominations and none were sent in. So this is the slate. We still need to vote on it. So the first part is the election of officers for a one-year term starting July 1, 2022. President Russ Harris, Vice President Joe McNamara and Second Vice President Kerry Reach. I'd like a motion, please, to approve this slate of officers. Tina Reed and Jason Sloan. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's carried. The next part of this are thinking. It's just simply approving the designations. The Reliant Community Credit Union, a motion, please, to approve the, the depository, the credit union. Linda and Paul, any discussion? The depository, uh, the credit union. Linda and, uh, Paul, any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. The next part of the signatories on the bank accounts, on the four county bank accounts. Um, there's, um, Stephen Miskel, the director, Sue Campbell, the treasurer. Russ Harris, the president, and Joe McNamara, the vice president. A motion to approve those signatories. Tina and. Uh, Jason, um, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That carries. And last of our changes in the bylaws. The, I think the, the biggest change was that doing away with. The second vice president, who didn't have many duties in the first place. Uh, and it just was felt it wasn't needed. The other part was the, um, the ability to, to vote as we are. Ahead of time to vote and then send in that information, uh, by email. Rather than waiting for the membership meeting when we vote. Um, by, we used, they used to do it by, you know, by physical being there. Uh, which, of course, people who, school boards who could not be there that night for whatever reason. Weren't represented. So this seemed to be a better way of, of having input from all of the member school boards. Are there any questions on the bylaws? All right, I happen to be chairman of the policy committee for four counties. So I, we worked on the bylaws. So a motion, please, to approve the changes in the bylaws. Linda and John? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. That completes, uh, and if you have, uh, any in. Suggestions for topics for the association, for the website, or any suggestions. Uh, which were the second part of that ballot. Uh, would you send those into Tina? She'll be sending this, uh, ballot into Sue Wyatt. Um, in a few days, I would assume. So get them to her if you have anything, okay? That completes what we have to do for, for county. Tina, is there any, uh, public, uh, wanting to have access to the board tonight?
No, I didn't have anyone reach out to me.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda runs through page four of your agendas. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. Uh, Paul and Jason? Uh, any discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? A motion is carried. We move now to page number six. On the consent, or on the agenda, uh, which is on page four. Number six, which is the approval of the deletion of the policy, uh, fifty-two-ten. Is there a motion, please? Paul and? Is there a second? John? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Um, number seven. Um. A motion, please, to adapt the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year budget spending plan. Motion? John and Isetta? Any discussion? All right, Tina, would you call the roll?
Linda?
Yes?
John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta? Thank you. Motion is carried.
All right, moving on to number seven, the. Um, the approval of the real property TX report card. A motion, please, for approval? Linda and? Uh, John? Any discussion? Tina, would you call the roll?
Linda?
Yes?
John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
All right, now we come to the part of the agenda that is always a happy time, good news. Uh, Linda's always, uh, and John have both mentioned some great things going on at the middle school and. High schools. Is there any other good news? Anyone wants to report? Paul?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what John or what Linda had about the, uh. Musical. I just thought it was fabulous and so many talented students. We've also had at our high school, the, uh. Save a Life Tour, which hopefully will do exactly that. And then I, I don't have a long list of athletic accomplishments this, so far this year, but I do have a baseball update, which I'm quite pleased with. Both our junior varsity team and our varsity team have won their first two games. So that's my good news.
Great, thank you, Paul. Anyone else? I think the other great news for everybody is that they're on vacation. We've had some nice days. And, uh, I hope they're all resting, relaxing, and rejuvenating themselves. Um. Moving on to, uh, board member, uh, request, comments, and discussion, I did want to. Uh, just remind you of some opportunities that are coming up. Um. If you didn't tune in to part one of the three-part series that the four county is offering. Um, the, uh, taking care of your staff during these demoralizing times to avoid burnout. Uh, the third, the second one is coming up, um, on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. Uh, you can certainly zoom into that if you are interested. Um, it was a good present, the first one was a good presentation. Um. The rural schools is, um. H- had to reschedule. Is that right? Is that the one? Wait a minute. Yes, uh, rural schools had to reschedule a conference that they had on a, uh. One that Linda, Tina, and I had signed up for. Um, it's called Protecting the Kids, Their Health, Their Safety, Their Future. It sounded like it was going to be an outstanding, uh, presentation that day. Um. If you want to go to that, let Tina know. There was a seventy-five dollar charge for that. Um, and I am not able to go to the rescheduled time that they have. So somebody can take my place and if anybody else wants to go, let her know about that. Um.
Linda, what is the rescheduled date? I didn't get notified yet.
Uh, April twenty-five.
April twenty.
No, no, I'm wrong. No, that's, registration opens on the twenty-fifth. It's on April twenty-nine.
Okay.
Which is a Friday.
I don't think I can either. Shoot.
Oh.
Okay, I guess.
And then rural schools also has a summer conference. I don't believe any of us, I'm sure. Members from previous boards have attended. I don't believe any of us have ever attended their, their, uh, summer conference. And this is what, their title is Why Rural School Works: Best Kept Secrets Revealed. Now, we'd like to know their secrets. Um, and that's on July ten and through the twelfth. In Cooperstown. Um, there's that conference and then there's also the October. Uh, NISBA Conference, which is in Syracuse. It's October twenty-seven through twenty-nine. Um, because both of these are fairly expensive, uh, conferences. We, I would suggest, uh, that if you choose one or the other, unless you have a real. Strong desire for both, uh, to let me know, but, um, do look them over. And, um, consider attending. I would assume the Syracuse one, I don't know whether we'd stay all night if there's a group of us. Like we did one in Rochester, we, we went back and forth. Uh, so that was my, uh. Information. I had one more piece of information. It's not for us to, uh, vote on as a board, but I did want to acknowledge. Um. This person right here. Who is, uh, a nominee for, um, the, for membership on the, um. Credit, the Reliant Credit Union Board, and that's our own John Bogart. Nice write-up, John, about you. And, um. I think it's, uh, a great thing when we have, uh, board members who are involved in other aspects of. Of the community at large and that's, um, so, John, uh, good luck to you and, uh. We'll see how that all turns out. Now, is there anyone else have anything for this area of the, um. Agenda? Well, if not, this completes our business for tonight. Um. Before I ask for an adjournment, I do want to wish you all a happy Easter. And, uh, enjoy your time with family and friends and, uh. We'll see you in, uh, at our next meeting, which was. What? That's on the, on the, um, May fifth, correct?
No, April twenty-seventh. April twenty-seventh. It's a Wednesday. It's the, um, Bozey's vote.
You're right. You're right. Okay, thank you, Tina. That Tina's earns every bit of money she gets for being our clerk because she keeps us straight. And we hope she's better soon. Uh, a motion, please, to adjourn. Nobody wants to adjourn? Isetta and Tina? Uh, any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening. Bye, everybody.
Happy Easter, everyone.